If a servant of God is on your knees lifting up the hands for the people of God...
If a servant of God is on your knees lifting up the hands for the people of God...
Yosua, Deva Janath kaaga oru Moshe kaygalay thukinaan.
And there was a Moses who lifted up the hands for the people of God.
Yaavam pilligal kaaga ni kayidukakudada.
Why shouldn't you not lift up your hands for the children?
Yaavam manavik kaaga ni onkayya veythakudada.
Why shouldn't you not do it for your wife?
Yaavam purushanu kaaga ni kayveythakudada.
Why shouldn't you not do it for your husband?
Yaavam viswasthuth kaaga ni kaygalay veythakudada.
Why should not do it for your faith?
Yaavam parisuttha kaaga ni kaygalay veythakudada.
Why shouldn't you not do it for your holiness?
Kaygalay veythakudala enbadhu Kristavanu deyay jayathinu deyay oru adayaalam.
Lifting up of one's hand is a symbol of victory in Christianity.
Oru yuttatle orathan kayya vaiditana, avan surrenderaita arnartham.
In a battle, if one would lift up the hand, it means he has surrendered.
Enne vana checkponunga, enta onnume illan solra oru artham.
You check me and you will find nothing.
Anakristavan kayya vaiditana, avan jayikirana artham.
But if a Christian lifts up the hand, it means he is victory.
Oru Kristavan kayya vaiditana silveela taney araya opu kuddutana artham.
If a Christian lifts up the hand, it means he is getting crucified.
Alunna idukka adukulla vitthiyasam.
That is the difference between this.
Ni kaygalay veythakudala enbadhu silveel unney araya opu kuddutaenbadhu artham. Ni kaygalay veythivittala, ni jayikapogiraayenradham.
Lifting up your hands means you yield yourself to be crucified. Lifting up of a hands means you get the victory.
Apannan kaygalay veythalee, iduvarikina jayichitavaranen, adi enna sadhanaim kekiringla, onakaka innorali yaarav orathan kayvaiditirukara.
Therefore, you may think, "I have not lifted up my hands, but I am getting the victory. Why is it? There is someone else who is standing up for you."
Oru velav manavi onakaka kayvaiditirukala.
Maybe your wife is lifting up your hands.
Oru velav purusham onakaka kayvaiditirukala.
Maybe your husband is doing that for you.
Oru velav pilligal onakaka kayvaiditirukala.
Maybe your children is doing that for you.
Yaarumey veythatha pochathil, Moshe epola oru ulyakaran onakaka kayvaiditirukala.
If there is none like that, maybe the servant of God is doing for you.
Anavudinal thanni nee indrunkindrunkundrakara.
That's why you stand today.
Innan jolapona, oru ulyakaran gudda onakkukay veythaleena, unay alaita devan onakaka kayya veythirupar.
It more, if there is no more servant of God also, your God who has called you may have lifted up the hand.
Alinamasa vaakuthatham.
That is the word of God.
Onakakaen naan, nin nanjivithirukkaravvar onakakaen kaygalay veythakurain.
I the Lord whom I am living, lift up the hands for you.
Onnalakay veythapudiyadha pochathil.
On that basis, you cannot lift up the hand.
Onay mattavukal maranduboyi onakaka kayveythatha pochathil.
When others have forgotten you, not lifting up their hands.
Onay maravada oru devan onakakaenindra kayvaythikundrakara.
There is a God who never forgets you, lifting up the hands.
Anrake silveelay, tanodey rendu kaygalayum virettadhum maatharamalla, aaniyarayindadhum maatharamalla, veyathinadhum maatharamalla, indrikka onakaka oru veythikundrakara, anavudinal, indrikka nee jayitukundeyavurukara.
Not only that, he stretched both his hands on the cross, yielding himself to be crucified. Even today, he is lifting up his hands for your problems.
Kaygalay veythakudala enbadhu palayirupattilum irukkara, duppuyirupattilum irukkara.
Lifting up of one's hands in the oldest man and in the newest man.
Adi nengal sariyanavathile vilangikolavendhi daavas.
We need to understand this properly.
Palayay, pudyirupattilum indha vartheegal irukkara.
These words are even in the newest man.
Palayirupattilum indha vartheegal irukkara.
Even in the oldest man.
Modalam Timothi, irandamadigaram 8 vasanathle, pavul Timothi deyavakuchollumbodude.
When Saint Paul says to Timothy, "In first Timothy, do it."
Oru devan deyapilla endusollugaravan, yappoladhum yella edangalileyum, tannudaya parisuttha kaygalay veyathi, avan devane thudikke vendun, jebikke vendum.
So-called child of God should lift up his holy hands and pray always.
Oru devan deyapilla yappoladhumay, tanodey kaygalay parisuttha kaygalaka maintainmana vendu.
A child of God need to maintain his hands as holy hands.
Abritam Bible solukaradhu.
That's what the word of God says.
Andhiyum purushargal koobumum tarkkumum illamal, parisutthumana kaygalay veyathi, yella edangalileyum jabumpannavendu menthi virumbukare.
Parunga, parisuttha kaygalay veythakudala.
Lifting up of holy hands.
Yappaniga jaumannali, yenge jaumannalu, neegavekkavepadaakudada, vatanaya kayvaiditirunga.
Whenever and wherever you pray, don't feel ashamed, lift up your hand.
Mudindhalavu rendu kaygalay nengal veythunga.
At most, most of both of your hands.
Ni abridipannum bodhu, aanadavara, ni kuupurana artham.
When you do that, you are inviting the Lord.
Bible vasana podi, ni kaygalay veythitthala, nee jayikaramsitana artham.
According to the word of God, when you lift up, you will prevail.
Niengal abridi kaygalay veythakura oru practice, nengal panniparunga.
Now get into the practice of lifting up your hands.
Nengal Bible la padichupadigana.
You read the word of God.
Moshe kaygalay veythinana sambavangalirukkara.
Incident of Moses lifting up the hands.
Thavidu kaygalay veythinana sambavangalirukkara.
Incidents of David lifting up his hands.
Seonukke aalosani chollapotta oru karigangaliam parkalam.
And we see about the counsels given to Zion.
Ibridi athniyavasanangal, naan oru nalanju vasana engalkumunnalavakeevaram.
Likewise, I want to place four or five verses before you.
Oru devan deyapilla endusollugaravan, tanodey pilligalaka, avan kaygalay eradukkanaama.
A so-called child of God should lift up his hands for his children.
Pilippi, sorry, pulambal irandamadigaram.
Turning to Lamentations 2.
Patthambotham vasaname enna solukaradhu.
Verse 19, what does it say?
Muurchitthukadakkara, unnudaya pilligaludaya prananukaaga, onkaygalay eradupayaka.
Lift up your hands for the life of the young children which faint for hunger.
Innailarundu, neesaguravarakum kaygalay veythi practice pannanoo.
You practice to lift up your hands from today until your death.
Naan indha prasangam mannambodhu.
When I give this message.
Apannu plus two exam time oradathal.
I was then, at that time, a plus two exam going on.
Adamamma engal dam pillay medikalla padikavikunna, naan aasai.
There was a mother who decided to educate her child in the medical college.
Avan ennavananga, andha pillan alla oralavu tham padikum.
That child would study only in average.
Anapilla medikal padikunna.
But she wants to educate her in medical college.
Ilukka, andha amma boyi, tam pillika, oru munnaaran kayvaiditikka.
For that, she lifted up her hand for one hour.
Oru munnaaran kayvaiditana, vayaradharanakay veythakurain.
Anyone who lifted up the hand for one hour?
Padanijinimshathukku mala bonaa, kayi ilukumbadunga, chundumbadunga, ilukun narumbala.
About five minutes, you can see your nerves just constraining you.
Anak kaygalay veythakuradhu, jayam.
But lifting up of hands is the victory.
Ananam, andha pillaki medikalun kadachidhu, padichidhu, valakum andrichi.
That child got the admission in the medical college, she studied, she got the job.
Kilpadiyamal pona, un pilligaludaya prananukaaga, onkaygalay eradu.
Lift up your hands for the life of your children who are disobedient.
Pulambal 3:1 enna solukaradhu.
Turning to...
On irudheyattinii eradukkara, bolu onkaygalayum, kankalayum, aanadavrathle eradupayaka.
Lamentations 3:41, lift up your hands unto the Lord, even as you lift up your heart.
Oru ulyakaran enna sayenam?
A servant of God, what he needs to do?
Vedam enna solukaradhu.
What is the word of God saying?
Andhuvade samugathal 134:2.
In Psalm 134 verse 2.
Parisuttha salathukken neraha, omgal kaygalay eradutthu thudiyinka.
Lift up your hands and praise God in the sanctuary.
Neekonjinairan kayvaidi jebichina.
If you lift up your hands and pray.
Kattaradhu abridi kanakpooradharay.
Then how does the Lord value it?
144:2.
Psalm 141 verse 2.
Nee yappakayyadutthaloo, adukka oru kanakkaruke.
All the time you lift up your hands.
En vinnappum, omakumunbaka, dhoubum aakavum, en kayyaduppa, andipalli aakavum, irukka kadavudhu.
Neekonjinairan kayyadutthu jebichina, adu devan deyakanakal ennade, andipalli.
If you lift up your hand and pray for some time, that's a evening sacrifice.
Andipalli selitivittayenradham.
It means he have offered the evening sacrifice.
Entana devan deyapilla, omgaldey kaygalay eradukkappogurirakay.
How many children of God are going to lift up your hands?
Thothutuputhothuponavangalakalai, innake oru concept kodukapadukaradhu, kaygalay veythangal, nengal jayikalam.
Today, an aspect is given to the failed ones, the defeated ones. You can lift up your hands to get the victory.
Veckamarka, veckamarka.
Are you ashamed?
Arayvetei poodikal.
Then you close your room.
Onvitu kulla ukanthu, nisiyay, andharangattala kayya veyathu.
Get into your home, in secret, lift up your hand.
Neekonjinairadhu, attukku, baliya, adu bali marirukkutom.
Take time to do it and let it be as a sacrifice.
Adukonjan oru anjinimshambodom.
And let it be five minutes.
Pattimimshambodom.
Then even ten minutes.
Padanijinimshambodom.
Then fifteen minutes.
Naan oru faithamla ulyayseetha bodhu.
When I am in stood in a faith home.
Faithamukke eduravu, oru vittla, oru sagodri remba mosumarna.
There was a sister who was in a worse condition in the opposite house.
Night, 12:00, nee vandheyelupunna.
Midnight, 12 o'clock, they woke me.
Namponay.
I went.
Adesister remba mosumarkanganan.
That sister was in a worse condition.
Andhuukathle, nee chuponan konjinairam.
In a sleep itself, I went to that house.
Boy konjinairan jebichan.
I went and prayed for some time.
Paravallay, sariyadon, abridinte vanditaya.
I just said, "It will get all right," and came.
Oru vanyirukkam.
About 1:30.
Trippi vandheyelupunanga, remba mosumarna.
Again, they woke me up, that sister's worse.
Naan neegi thungoda madanga bolirkundu, nan trippi monay.
I thought, "They will not allow me to sleep," and went again.
Trippi konjinairan jebichan.
Again, prayed for some time.
Vanditaya.
I came back.
Sariyadon jebikiran, naan jebikiran, sariyadon.
I said, "It will get all right, I'll pray."
Trippi oru 3:00 vandang.
Again, 3:00, they came.
Andhesister setthurchin, neegaroh, remba mosumarna.
I think the sister is almost dead.
Enak, appanna, thookame poyitschi.
And my sleep is gone then.
Yengevam thappantam.
We have mistaken somewhere.
Iparadiputturum bolirkundu.
And now I am in jail.
Chinnakutti kolandiga.
They are little children for her.
Enna pandrathu, enak, appon, bhaiyame andrichi.
What to do? I was terrified.
Aduvarikin thookaporathathila, vandham, karamikke jebichituponammarandhiji. Appo, enak, aavyana oru renadu poradnara.
In my drowsiness, I just prayed for duty sake, then the spirit of God strove with me.
Aladha, naan malangal potaya.
After that, I was on knees.
Andavare, naan rendu trippu vandu, sariyajebikila.
Lord, I did not pray well.
Ippanan jebikira.
Now I am praying.
Yan kayya naan veythra.
I lift up my hands.
Neega vidhalakudana.
You give the deliverance.
Allan, the family, mottamun, ninnu, malangal, ninnach.
The whole family stood on knees.
Anjinimshambodchi.
Five minutes passed.
Pattimimshambodchi.
Ten passed.
Padanijinimshambodchi.
Fifteen minutes passed.
20 nimshambodchi.
Twenty minutes passed.
Kayi, rendu kayla, onna, kayi matra exercise langadhu, oru exercise tha.
Both of her hands were lifted up equally.
20 nimshambodchi.
Twenty minutes passed.
Eppidi irukkan kada.
I asked, "How was she?"
20 nimshambodchi, kayyavaidi jebichitthu, kada, eppidi irukkan paran.
After my twenty minutes of lifting her hands, I asked, "How was she?"
Adu sinking stage lirunda time.
That time, she was in sinking stage.
Allan, aliduthanga, setthruonni sol.
They were all crying that she would die.
20 nimshambodchi, malangal potu, kayya veythi, aadhu, poradnabarka.
But after that twenty minutes of striving in prayer on knees.
Avan chonanga, oru pattimimshambodchi, chediche. Eppaniga pattimimshambodchi jebichittrukkambodhu, adu normalukkandrichi. 15 nimshambodchi, adu kanna modi thoongetchi.
They said, "After ten minutes, she came to the normal. After five minutes that, she slept."
Appanayosai, ida modalee chinchirunda, naan ondrakee vidukku amidyapoyikala.
Then I thought, "If I had done that earlier, I could have slept well."
Namakkondhu, kaalan gandhaparadhu, nyanavodhengalavardhu.
But we have knowledge and wisdom only after time is past.
Adukpradhu, enak, bhaiyame andrichi.
After that, I was afraid.
Appanayosai, ohho, kaygalay veythakudala prasangathal maatharamalla, namakayya veythana, janathukenna undahom, suhom undha.
It is then I thought, "My preaching should not be just lifting up of hands. I should do it for my people and they will be healed."
77:22. Yeravallam, enkai talaramal virekappaduthandadhu.
Psalm 77, David says, "My hand was lifted up all through the night."
En 4:4, yiravilum enkai talaramal virekappaduthandadhu.
Yaravilum, 77:2. Yaravilum enkai talaramal virekappaduthandadhu.
And my hand was lifted up even in the night.
28:2. Andavare, enkaygalay omakken neraha eradukkara, en vinnappadhu, yappudiavudhu, neer kettuvidam.
Even in 22, it is written, "Lord, I lift up my hands, hear my voice."
Andhuvade samugathal, okkuvka, kaygalay veythanga, kaygalay vireinga.
Lift up your hands toward the presence of God and look at time.
Ibridi innay, evlovavasana irukke.
There are so many verses.
Abikuriyajivithila vanditthu, paruguni, kaygalay veythi, palakunna.
After coming to the spiritual life, habituate lifting up your hands.
Adiyahum, 4:23, Moshe, aavraga, kaygalay veythi solra, enak, onnume, olakathala vendha.
Genesis 14:23, Abraham lifted up his hand and said, "I don't want nothing in this world."
Onudaya kayyadupu enbadhu, nyayathirupuyi undhakku, nyayathirupuyi niruthum.
Lifting up of your hands will bring judgment and also stop judgment.
Eppidi vettim, tolviyum, kaygalay veythakudala, thalavidhalil, mirukkara, adu bolu, onudaya kayyadupulay, nyayathirupu undahom.
As to how there will be victory and defeat, on the basis you lift up your hand and let down your hands.
Adhe, kayyadupu, nee trippi pannenana, nyayathirupu nisiyoo, nikku.
So, they will be bringing up of judgment and stopping judgment by lifting up your hands.
Vanathay adakkavunakadigaramarukkara, vanathay tharakavunakadigaramarukkara.
You have the right to close heaven, shut heaven, and also to open heaven.
Adudham satthiyam.
That is truth.
Yatraham, 10:2.
Exodus 10.
22, Moses lifted up his hands with a rod.
Anga enna undanadhu? What happened there?
Bayangaramana nyayathirupu.
Terrible judgment.
Vedam enna solukaradhu.
What is the word of God saying?
Moses, tan kayya ivanathukken neraha, nettinan.
Moses stretched both his hands toward heaven.
Desamella, 3:4.
And a thick darkness in all the land three days.
Ni kayya veythana, sathruukkattan, nyayathirupu kudduturvar.
If you lift up your hand, God will judge the enemies.
Anadheen arathle.
At the same time.
Ni andavare, enshuli, kaygalay veythinana, nyayathirupu, appriyabrekkarchamadhu, nippatuvar.
If you lift up your hands crying unto the Lord, the Lord will put a break to the judgment.
Yatraham, 1:29.
Exodus 9:29.
En kaygalay kattarakken neraha virepene, appoladhu idimulakkangal, oindhu, kalmalay, ninndru bohum.
I will spread abroad my hands unto the Lord and the thunder shall cease.
Nyayathirupu niruthum, onakkuk kayyadutthal narakkum, nyayathirupu undhakku, nee kayyadutthal narakkum.
If you lift up your hand, judgment will come as well, judgment will cease.
Ibridi enna vilangikolukkara?
What do we understand from this?
Naam, namudaya kaygalay veythavendu, avasyam.
Very essential, we need to lift up your hand.
Ni ondade walkalee sariyilliyaa, ondade walkalee prachanayirka, innake naan onakkade deva aalosnaya solra, nee kayvaidi practice pannipar.
Do you have a problem in your life? Today, I tell you the counsel of God, lift up your hand on the presence of God.
Anjinimshambodchi practice pannu.
Five minutes.
Adutthi pattimimshambodchi practice pannu.
And then for ten minutes.
Remba fifteen minutes.
Then for fifteen minutes.
Abridi aram, naravari, pongo.
Continue half an hour.
Abridi oru noorver practice edithingana, enna vandu solunga, orunal, potti, kaygalay veythakura, oru jabum, potti vikala.
If hundred of you practice, then finally, we will have a competition of lifting up hands for one hour.
Rendu kayyum, pootichu, veythi, nippatu.
Both the hands for one hour.
Avamay ennalamo, olakathala, periyasadanalan jaira.
Many people achieve many things in the world.
Rappar maru urundra.
They roll like a rubber.
Yoga, adu, idinu, kaalay, kayyum, madachi, iluthitthu.
They fold their hands and feet with yoga practice.
Naan kayya madakkalancholala, aragaa, decenta kayya veyththun sol.
I don't want you to fold your hand decently, lift up your hand.
Adu onakkade jayathaykonduvaru.
That will bring you the victory.
Yobu, prachanayin uchakattathal irukkambodhu, oratham boyi chonna, neekonjan kayya virechuparaya, onakkade jayam kadekila mensu.
When Job was in the climax of his problem, one person said to him, "Lift up your hand and see."
Yobu, 11:3.
Job, chapter 11, verse 13.
Neervumuday irudheythi aytupaduthi, umuday kaygalay, avarkken neraha virethal, nalama irukkum.
Yaaray, yaaray, yaarukidukkuru, oru uttaman, Sanmarkan, adhavane kubhayandavan, pollaapukke velakina manisha, Tishasin poradhatthala, yellavatiyil, nindan, nadutthurulu, nikkyumbodude, oratham vandu solra, am friende, nee onnu saye, onkaygalakonjan veythi paraya, virechuparaya, adu onakkade nalama irukkun, nannakira.
This man, who was a just man, who feared God, who eschewed evil, now, when he was in problem in the middle of the street, his friends said to him.
Onkaygalay avarkken neraha, virethal, nalama irukkum.
It is good if you stretch out your hands toward him.
Adabridi kilpadincha.
He obeyed.
Mandicha, elia, asiruvanakadachidha elia?
Did he receive blessings?
Rettipana asiruvadam, yobukku kadachidha elia?
Did Job receive double-fold blessings?
Onkaygalay nee veythipar.
Try to lift up your hands.
Iduvarai jayikada, jayam onakkade kadekam.
You will get the victory you have not received.
Thothu, thothu, puramudhu, katti, pinvangi, vekkappadhu, setta mahamaga, thirimivandhu, devan deyajaname, indrikki onakkadu jayathukkattan, oru vali solukarar, onkaygalay ivanathukken neraha, avarkken neraha, eradupayaka.
People of God who have returned with a sad countenance, being defeated all the way. Today, God is giving, God is giving you a counsel, lift up your hands and get the victory.
Thavidu veythinabodhu, jayithaan.
David lifted and he got the victory.
Moshe veythinabodhu, janangal jayithaaraka.
Moses lifted and people got the victory.
Moshe, tan kaygalay veythinabodhu, parvvanu deyasingaasanam asainthadhu.
Moses lifted and the throne of Pharaoh was shaken.
Innake ethtnaver, omgal pilligalaka, omgalaka, omgaldey anmikathiraka, parisuttha thiraka, jaya jiviyathiraka, omgalidukka, ettnaver, kaygalay eradukkavu, opu kuddukappogurirakay.
How many of you will surrender today to lift up your hand for you, for your children, for your holy life?
Sephaniah 3:14.
The Lord says, "Zion, do not spare your hands."
Sephaniah 3:16. Anga enna solukaradhu, Seonay, onkaygalay talavadhaade.
Oh Zion, let not thy hands be slack.
Ni Seonagirundala chari, Erisalemarnala chari, onkaykal talarundhal, nee thothupovai.
Zion or Jerusalem, if your hand is slack, you will get the defeat.
Onkaygalay nee veythinana, nee jayipay.
If you lift up your hand, you will prevail.
Idudham devan deyastadhu, satthiyam.
This is the truth of God.
Moshe, tan kaygalay veythinabodhu, amalekay, thothukundrundhar.
Moses lifted up the hand and Amalekai is defeated.
Moshe, tan kaygalay thalavidugayle, amalekay, jayithaaraka.
When he held down his hand, Amalekai is prevail.
Onvalvil, nee jayikavenduma, thothupogavenduma?
Do you want the victory or defeat in your life?
Onudaya valiyay, marikkara sakthiyay, nee jayikavenduma, thorkavenduma?
Do you want to prevail over the power which hinders your way?
Ni adaya pogum, singaasanathai, peravadamal, tadukkara, vallemi, nee jayikapoguraya, thorkapoguraya.
Are you going to prevail over or are you going to be defeated before the power which stops you from getting your throne?
Priemalule, jayikumbodiaga, omgaldey kaygalay veythi, nengal palakunga.
Beloved, practice to lift up your hand to get the victory.
Ni kaygalay veythumbodhu, kattar arpothangalay chivaa.
When you lift up your hand, God will do wonders.
Ni kaygalay veythinana, nee jayipadhu maatharamalla, sathruukkun, nyayathirupu undahom.
Lift up your hand, you will get the victory and judgment upon your enemies.
Ni kaygalay veythumbodhu, onakkadu oradumana, nyayathirupu niruthappadum.
Lift up your hand and judgment upon you will cease.
Ni veythakuradhu maatharamalla.
Not only you lifting up the hand.
Moshe, kaygalay veythinana.
Moses lifted up the hand.
Onakaka ulyerakal, kaygalay veythakuradha.
Someone of God are lifting up hands for you.
Yaarumey onakkade kayvaythataalilaya?
Do you have nobody to lift up the hand?
Devan veythuvar.
Even God will lift it up for you.
Thavidukku, oru nirukkamana, kattam vandapodhu.
David had a constraining situation.
Anukka kayvaythu, anukka helppandrakka, aalil.
There was noone to help him.
Avan ipadirecta, aanadavara, padikunna.
He directly pleads God.
1:2.
Kathavay elundarulum, devane, umdade kayyaveyathum, eeledigalay maravadheyum.
1:2, anurindavasana thala, varselukarara, enna solukarara, "Kathavay, umdade kayyaveyathum."
Psalm 10:12, Lord, lift up your hand.
Omadhey eeleyayagi, ennay, maranduvadali.
Forget now the humble.
Andavare, neerelundarolo.
Lord, arise.
Avan kekaram badunga.
See what he asks.
Asariirgale, enakkaka kayvaythangal, nee solama, yenge pita, directa, avartey pita.
He did not say, "Praise, lift up the hand," he directly approach to God.
Yaarav, kayvaythataaligadhu.
There was none to lift up hands for him.
Avanala, nee kayvaythamudiyala.
And he could not do it also.
Neera, aanadavara, kuttan, devane, enakkaka, umdade kayyaveyathum.
Directly called unto God, "God, lift up your hand for me."
Veythinaralaya?
Did he do it?
Niengal Bible fulla padichupadigana, Thavidu, oru iduttalindhu, thothudukkara.
All through the Bible, David never defeated.
Enndral, avanaka veythinava, manisha alla, devan.
Because it was not a man who lifted up hand for him, but it was God.
Devan, onakkaka, kaygalay veythinana, nee thothupogamatai.
If God will lift up the hand for you, you will not have defeat.
Ubhamam, 32:4.
Naan in karathay ivanathukken neraha veyathi, naan enndayakum jivithirukkavar engray. Minnum, in patthayithi, naan karukaki, enkayyadu, nyayathetipidithukollumanaal, en sathrukaldathil, palivangi, ennay, pahakkiravaru lukkupadilipay.
Andavara, solara, naan en karathay ivanathukken neraha veyathi, avan solra, vartha ennade, naan enndanrekkum jivithirukkavair.
The Lord, lifting up his hand, he says, "I live forever."
Innor vasanam, naan omgalakucholukaradhu.
Another verse.
Ezekiel 36:7.
Chapter 36, verse 7.
Adhalal, katthraya, aanadavaraayirukkaranan, en karathay veyathuvay, umgalay suttilum irukkar, perajadigal, tangaldey avamanaatay, nitsayamai, subupparugal, enthi solukaray.
Ebedi, naan, enkayya veythitthana, onakkadu oradumana, vallemi, allan, nitsayamai, avamanaatay, sumakkum.
If I lift up my hand, all the powers against you will bear the shame.
Naan, katthraya, aanadavaraayirukkaranan, naan, en karathay veyathuvay.
I the Lord, God will lift up my hand.
Onakkaka karathay veythukaduka, adayalamagattan, tanodey sondokumarane, silveelay karathay veytha, aanigaladithu veyaravaitaar.
As a sign of Lord lifting up the hand, he made his son to be lifted up on the cross with his hands' name.
Tanodey jivan, bohu, arai, andha, kaygal, aaniyadikappadhu, virekappaduthandadhu, veythapaduthandadhu.
It was stretched and lifted up with nails until his death.
Onakkahaum, enakkahaum, mulu, manukkulathukahaum, karathay veythinaddevan, neetchum, indhum, endhum, maradavair, indha, aradanailum, onakkaka, tanodey karathay veythumbodiaga, vandhirukkara.
God who has lifted up his hand for you, for me, for the whole mankind, until his death, even today, he is sane and he has come to lift up the hand.
Nengal ellavatiyil, andupuyivittirukala?
Have you lost everything?
Yobu, epola, nirpandamana, sunnelil, poyivittirukala?
Are you in a pitiful situation like Job?
Onkaygalay virethuparunga.
Lift up your hand.
Ni Moshe epola, oru parvvanu dey poradhatthal, ninndrunkundrakara?
Are you in the conflict of Pharaoh like Moses?
Onkaygalay veythipar.
Lift up your hand.
Thavidu epola, yaaruv, sagayamilla, adu, lavruthukka, nee vanduvittaya?
Are you helpless like David?
Andavare, enakkaka, umdade kayya veythum, enthi sol, avar veythuvar.
Tell the Lord to lift up his hand for you and he will do it.
Enna nandamadhu?
What happened?
Moshe, yum, pakkaram, pavum, avanuk kayya veythra, kila potta, vatanay veythirom.
Moses lifted up the hand, held down his hand, and again lifted up.
Naan jolrala, enna aduklu, ukanthi, yella malangal potunga, abrimo. Avan, konjan, varu, valiya illamas, thothra, thothran, nipanga, trippi, rendu nimshambodhi, oru chorus ponnu, nee tapun, kela, enna malangal, vandhavandhitiga. Edukisolra, nee ukanthithena, thothutti, enshulitha.
If you sit down, you will get defeated, that's why I ask you to stand on knees again and again.
Onudaya kaygalay veythi, nee palak.
Try to lift up your hands.
Parisuttha kaygalay, maathiy veyth.
Turn your hands to be holy and lift up.
Suththamanasachyodu, kaygalay veythi.
With good conscience, lift up.
Onkaygalay, nee eradutthale, teriyon, sathru, thothupogavaran.
If you lift up your hands, your enemies will feel the shame.
Neekayatu, kistan, pannithenale, padala, asayum.
Once you lift up your hands, then hell will be shaken.
Enna onakkadu, teri, ivan kayya veythitana?
Because.
Ini namakadu tolvi.
They know that this person has lifted up the hand and we will have the defeat.
Oru kayya veythi, oru noor thothramanunga.
Lift up the hand, say hundred praises.
Veron, kayya veythitthu, pakkumar, nikama, konjan, kayya veythi, nalas thothramanunga, kayya veythi, nalaa, abishavathal, narumbanga, kayya veythi, vasanacholunga, adukpa, oru noor thothramanunga, addutthu, oru aayiras thothramanunga, addutthu, patthayiras thothramanunga, adukla, pannigingla?
Lift up your hands and don't stand simply, say a hundred praises, thousand praises, tell the promises of God and get filled in the anointing.
Adana, oru nimshathukku, oru nootiru thothramanlan, oru kanak, oru la, normal, abridna, thothramarukkada, konjan, athiyachonnamarukkum, nalas thothramana, oru nimshathukke, noor thothra, ala, apala.
You can have beautiful hundred praises in one minute.
Padanijinshanna?
Ten minutes?
Airon vodrala.
Thousands.
Chari, kontinua, podamuliyaa, oru kampanarangalchi, trippi nisiyay, kayvaythi, abridi, neegavutamo veythana.
Continuously do it without ceasing.
Ajaabla, valakiponna, onboduminar, nikke vichara, teacherana, chariye, kodukamatakara, chala schoolla, enna ukanthirivenga, ondadi teriyu, appuschoolla, onakkondhu, uni, ukaravadaama, enna, appaniga, ukanthithena, nee thungiruva. Adanaale, avan, uni, thungavada, kodan, nikke vikara, naangalo, nee jayikunugaradhu, kaagata, kaygalay veythacholtra, Bible, adattha, valiyuruthukaradhu.
In your work spot, in your places where you are employed, you stand and do the job, even we ask you to lift up your hands, that you may not face defeat in your life.
Enna nandachidhu?
What happened?
Moshe, in kaygal, asandu vich.
The hands of Moses were faint.
Avanu, thukki, 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 yarakki, yarakki, pathu, kadesa, enna pandrathu, andavare, ippudi, padi, kayi valigida, enna pandrathu?
Lifted up, held down, and again, he said, "Lord, what should I do?"
Rendu selli, aru, nu, 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 nu.
Then Aaron and Hor stood on both sides.
Avanu, padthanga, idenadhu, vettith tolvi.
What victory and defeat all the time?
Idas standard, or idaadu, unupanam?
Somehow, it should be lifted up standard.
Enna vannaga?
What to do?
Neera, boy, oru kal, eduthukundu, vachchi, Moshe, ala, ukarasertam.
They brought a stone and asked Moses to sit.
Onkayi valigida?
Use your hands painting.
Rendu kayya, enga, tholla, kuddutrunga.
And put it on the both of shoulders.
Rendu kayya, enga, thukyachidha? Onnu, Moshe, aru, nu, dey, tholle, addutthi, evan tholle, achidha.
Moses lifted up his hand, placed both on either shoulders.
Aladha.
That's it.
Kayi ore, maririnchi.
Hand was stayed up.
Joshua, jayichitthu, boyi, pooranajaythaput.
Joshua got the victory and final complete success.
Indha, puligal, allan, avangal, anganga, poi, stand, banni, laanjara, vich, adikiradhu, keli, ellathin, thukittupomriyadhu, adanaale, enna vannu, vangan, konjan, thidakatharamana, aal, nippati, varu. Avan tholle, radikachidha, laanjara, thukyachidha, adibamba, badunga, indha, tholle, abridi, picchidhu, poram, marukkum, konjan, aru, padigana, indha, tholle, vandu, kayip, padichiro. Military, padigum, bodhu, first, idatham, bagara, tholle, abridi, irukkan, bagara, ivam, yaar, ivam, puligal, nekandubirira. Namake, nammatol, allan, abridi, irukke, mattavukalde, karangalay, thangaramaruka, abridi, irukke.
How is her shoulder easy to bear the hands of others?
Anga, moonu, venum, chendu, otthulachanga.
All the three, they cooperated.
Yuttakalathal, yosua, undevan deyajanamo, malayuchila, Aaron, Ur, Moshe.
Joshua and the people of God in the battlefield, and Moses, Aaron, and Hor on the hilltop.
Innake, girekara, ellarun, thirmanadukkana, oratharuka, oratharukka, kayvaythana.
Today, all of us should make a decision to lift up the hands toward for one.
Onakkaka, mattumala, nee devajanangal, vetchiver, mudiyagani, kaygalay veyth.
Not only for you, even for the victory of the people of God.
Innailarundu, nengal, oru practice pannapore.
From today, make a practice.
Kathirupukutama, vanditthu, ontram, narav, malangal, ninndruno.
Tiring meeting, then you be on knees for one and a half hours.
Servisa, moona, bhatu, mudichidha, malangal, ninndruno.
Sunday service, after the third song, be on knees.
Nala, kaygalay veythi, nalaa, abishavathal, narumbanga.
Lift up your hands and get filled in the anointing well.
Enganga blockana, retthamal, olunga, odharumsira, trippi, kayi, nilukkadhu, kaal, nilukkadhu.
Then your blood will not get blocked, you will have a good circulation.
Abridana?
Is it not?
Enak, adu, idu, oru block, oradhu, ellamay, correcta, neevatuk, malangal, potu, kayvaythi, abishavathal, narumbu, irukkarak, kattan, nerla, veliyapidu, nalaa, retthavat, arukkum, arumya, exercise.
Be on knees and get filled in the spirit, lifting up your hands, it is a beautiful exercise for your body.
Here, railway station, nee, parkla, boyi, nattadukkati, thirtirva, chutitirukkano, ingeva?
Why should you go on a jogging and move about in the railway station and the park? You come to the presence of God and exercise.
Kaygalay veythinana, jayam.
Lift up your hands, get the victory.
Idavandhu, kankuda, fieldla, ninne, yosua, partha.
This Joshua saw with his eyes on.
Avanuk, nalaa, thirinchirichi, porayidangal, molamaha, enna, kadayadhu, vettim, tolvi, kadayadhu.
He well knew that the weapons will not bring the victory and defeat.
Adheen arathle, oru manisha, kayya, kila, pottana, thothruvoo, ammoshe, aranala, kayya, pottana, thoth, thothruvaa, nthirinja, andhashtiyati, ambadichtha.
At the same time, he learned the truth that even if it beat Moses or anyone else, if they held down their hands, they will fail.
Kayya, kila, pottai, innakala, ennakimay, tolvi, keda, avas, sariyapadambadicham.
He well, was taught the lesson, if you put down the hands, you will have defeat.
Enna nandhadhu?
What happened?
Ippa, Moshe, in kaalan, mudichirichi.
Now, the time of Moses was over.
Ippa, yosua, in kaalan, vandrichi.
Joshua's reign began.
Ippa, yosua, oru yuttakalathukupar.
Now Joshua went for a battle.
Ibbunka, adhe, study, kattar, kudukkara.
The Lord gave him the same study.
Nengal vedathala, parukum, bodhu, yosua.
Look into the word of God.
8:18.
Joshua 8:18.
Idhe, practice, ipa, avandu, practice pannala, adu, saal, padatra.
This same practice, now, he was not taught, but he practiced it.
Appadukkattar, yosua, inooki, unkayilirukkare, eehtiyay, ayyukken neraha, neetu, aday, unkayil, opu, koodupi, neendar, appadu, yosua, tan, kayilirundae, eehtiyay, pattnathukken neraha, neetinan.
Ingay, ayyipattnatla, thodarcha, adivangi, eetavara.
Here, the people at the city of E, the people have gone, been defeated.
Ippa, kattar, solukarara.
Now, the Lord said.
Onkayilirukkare, eehtiyay, ayyipattnatukken neraha, neetu.
You stretch out your hand with the spear toward the city.
Ippa, adhe, practice, na, yaar, kudukkara, re, adhe, padanna, Bible, ondu, ala, maathame, kadayadhu, vasanangala, maathame, varad.
There's no change in the Bible, no change in his verses.
Pramanaangal, ubadesangala, maathamay.
The law, the doctrine is unchanged.
Ippa, inga, jayikanu.
Now, here, they have to get the victory.
Ippa, jayikanu, na, odanae, yuttakalathukka, janangal, poosulithi, aanadavara, nee, ayyipattnatukken neraha, onde, neatiyay, neatte.
Asking the people to go to the battlefield, the Lord said, "You stretch your hand with the spear toward the city."
Moshe, kayil, oru, kanchibona, kool, adu, thukiki, avan, tadumari, dam. and in the hand of moses was a dry rod and he was tumbling with that the dry rod it was weightless with that he did wonders with that he could not hold it up for long time but the lord said to joshua ate a tuft of subjects it was not a stick or a rod but it was a spear he beautiful got the training he was not an ordinary man his mind was okay even we put down the hands we fail therefore there should be no such things even if the hand breaks down he stressed it out he did not get the excuses with god but he held out his hands stretch out his hands with the spear and with no compromise finally he got the victory joshua eight twenty six joshua drew not his hand back wherever he stretched out joshua had the seal that he should never get defeated therefore he held up stretched out his spear until the end he did not draw out his hand until he utterly destroyed the inhabitants of ai look at the thought that he had aaronum oorum moseyin kaygalai thangivithundha aaron and ho held up moses hands until the sun go down how many of you are going to lift up your hands from today against the power of emalik which strives against you and your family and your people is your husband not saved when he goes to the work you lift up your hand when he sleeps lift up the hand when everybody goes for work lift up the hand when you get time practice lifting up your hands and if you ten minutes lift up the hand you will get victory today amalekiah should be defeated the message that god gives you today is if you lift up the hand i will make you prevail the time when you become weak you cannot lift up the hand my son my daughter i will lift up my hand for you how many of you will surrender you should not leave this emalik if you spare him he will get you a how many of you want to prevail over this power which will lie wait in the way which will attack you which will hinder you from getting to the throne how many of them to prevail over the power which will destroy the anointing how many of you will prevail over the power which tries to get down from the throne today let you lifting up be the evening sacrifice for the sun saved husband for your sickly children for your sinful generation lift up lift up your hand how many of you will lift up the hand you will get the victory a sound of god will lift up sand for you god will lift a sand for you when you lift up the hands someone of god lifts up the hand god lifts up the hand how will you get the defeat for some minutes hold close your hands be on knees first practice lift up your hands for five minutes this is not a school but there is a great truth his hands was the reason for the victory when he goes to the pharaoh with the rod he would be terrified oh he is come with the rod now he is going to lift up the hand don't know what judgment is going to come the enemy will be terrified how many of you believe this today the lord has given the word in your hand hold on to the word lift up your hand tell your problems in the presence of god lord such powers are around me devil is against my blessings i am pushed to be weak there is none to understand me but today i hope lord i lift up my head my god lift up thy hand for me do not fear servants of god are lifting up the hand for you if all the services are over god will raise the banner of victory for you his name is jehovah nisai and this name was given in the battlefield when he prevailed over the amalek his name was called jehovah nisai what does it mean god my banner of victory i will not put my head down i will not be defeated why should i be ashamed i will lift up my hands my god has lifted up my husband for me
hallelujah 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 jesus 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 amen 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 pathaalaattin vasalkalune metkoluvadilai ido satan minnalai pooda vanaathirundu vilaktham amen un kayeduppe vanaathai asai kattom paralogathai asai kattom pathaalaathai nadunnuvai kattom hallelujah unakkidhirai ellumbumayudam vaithidadi yendadaali stothiram unakkidhirai ellumbumayudam vaithidadi yendadaali stothiram parandidode umnavaadide avadide jathuride avadide umnavaadide varidide jathuride unakkidhirai ellumbumayudam vaithidadi yendadaali